Are you ready? Okay. We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. It's May 14th. It's 10 o'clock. And Commissioner Sakura and I are here for the meeting. Call up to order, and we will now have consents and approval from the county administration. Morning. Morning.
We have one exoneration for 19799 minutes for May 7th, 2025. Vouchers, General County, 286,7178. Magistrate Court, 45158. Number one, 4,04280. Chestnut Ridge Park, 4,17260. Camp Muffley, 2,075109. Mason Dixon Park, 2,075696. Mon County Center, 4,036122. Opioid Settlement Funds, 12,25723. Assessor Valuation, 15,76850. Payroll, 1,0091248781. Star City Tiff, 2,500. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, 28,10149. Mon General Tiff, 328,66560. University Town Center, 1,68273769. Harmony Grove, 32759739. Parks and Rec, 31,95988. Purchasing Card, General County, 10,99746. Chestnut Ridge Park, 58951. Mon County Center, 75985. Assessor Valuation, 8,020725. ARPA, 2,800 for a voucher total of 4,670,68379. We have no budget revisions to approve. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the county website and fiduciary orders for May 14th, 2025.
May I approve the consent and agenda items as presented?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have any extra fiduciary orders?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to introduction of new employees, personnel changes. Assessor, are they here? Oh, okay.
Morning, Patrick.
I was hitting.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Morning. How are you doing?
Good. Doing well. How about you all?
Good.
Here this morning to ask for approval for the hiring of Lisa Shoemaker as a personal property deputy. She'll be replacing Gracie Wilson, who's moved into another position in our office. She'll be a full-time position, starting at 35 hours a week with a 90-day introductory period, and she would start Friday, May 16th.
Move to approve the personnel as presented?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Thanks, Patrick.
Okay, we have a number of seasonal part-time for Camp Muffley. Come on down. Welcome back to our country.
Thank you very much. I'm here today because our superintendent is taking a Surfside Pool Operators class today. We have five employees to ask for permission to hire for Camp Muffley. One is Scott Grizzle. He'll be our seasonal part-time maintenance. And we also have Ms. Polling, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Pugh, and Ms. Haas, who will be our starting lifeguards for next weekend. We're here already. The seasonal maintenance will be $13 an hour. Lifeguard staff will be $12 an hour.
Move that we approve the personnel as presented?
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Now your second role for Mason Dixon Historical Park.
Angela's here.
Angela, oh, sorry. Sorry, Angela.
Oh, no, you're good.
Good morning, Angela.
Good morning.
I am with Mr. Daniel Escoti. He's going to be my new full-time maintenance staff employee. He's going to start out with a salary of $31,200 annually, and he will have benefits. And then, I don't know if my seasonal part-time is on there as well, but I'm also hiring Zealand Mayor. He'll be starting seasonally until this fall, starting at $13 an hour.
Move to approve the personnel as presented?
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other?
No, that's enough.
Okay. Let them go back to work. Okay. At this time, we will have comments from the public. Anyone like to come down? Please state your name, your address, and you have three to five minutes to discuss any issue you'd like. Come on down.
Price is Right.
Yes, yes.
Hi, Mary Ann Foles, 321 Morgantown Avenue. Just wanted to support, because you're going to have a public hearing, I believe, today, the changes that you're trying to make to the Mon County Planning Commission.
Great.
For today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support. Is there anyone else like to speak? Yeah, I'll play Marjorie Greene. Okay. Now we will have proclamations, law enforcement officers Memorial Day. Is there anyone here to read that? If not, I will read it. Okay, seeing none? Proclamation. Whereas President John F. Kennedy signed into law the bill proclaiming May 15th of each year to be known as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which that falls to be known as National Police Memorial Week, which is a time for mourning for police officers killed in the line of duty and recognition of those others who were injured protecting as citizens from harm. And whereas our law enforcement officers are the guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free, warriors in the battle against crime, and are dedicated to the preservation of life and property, and whereas every day we ask a great deal of the men and women of our nation's law enforcement agencies, from ensuring public safety, to serving as frontline workers, to responding to incidents involving domestic violence, substance abuse disorders, mental health challenges, and homelessness, often with limited resources, and whereas there have been 228 officers killed in the line of duty in the state of West Virginia. And whereas throughout the nation, more than 800,000 sworn law enforcement officers will participate in this official period of mourning, and whereas to members of law enforcement and your families, we know that not a single day nor a single week is enough to recognize your service and sacrifice. On behalf of the Montague County Commission and citizens, you have our unwavering support and eternal gratitude. Now therefore, we, the members of the Montague County Commission, do hereby celebrate May 11th through 17th, 2025, as the National Police Memorial Week in Montague County, and proclaim May 15th, 2025, as Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Day, and call upon all citizens to make every effort to express appreciation to these men and women who are willing to sacrifice their lives, if necessary, to guard us and our loved ones against all who would violate the law, and be it further resolved that we invite all citizens to reflect and remember Morgantown Police Officer Frank M. Fadazo and Montague County Sheriff Sergeant Michael Todd May, who lost their lives in service to our community. These men will forever be remembered for this ultimate sacrifice, adopted this 14th day of May, 2025.
Will we approve the proclamation as presented?
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want to note there is a re-flaying tomorrow on the Courthouse Square.
Yes.
10 o'clock?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
And we'd like the public to be there. Okay. Proclamation, Emergency Medical Services Week. And I believe we have several people here in support of this. Thank you for coming.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Brandon Johnson. I'm a field operations captain with MONI EMS. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services fill healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas members of emergency medical service teams serve in a broad range of roles, from providing highly skilled care in an ambulance, to serving as educators, practicing community paramedicine, and conducting research, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the County Commission of Montague County, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 51st anniversary of EMS Week theme is EMS Week, We Care for Everyone. We encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities in honor of the EMS profession and the essential service it provides.
I move that we approve the proclamation as presented?
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all you do for us.
Yes, thank you very much. Would you like a picture with the proclamation?
Sure.
And is everybody? Yeah. If they came.
Yeah, bring your staff up.
That way you could say they all came.
Can we do that up here?
Yeah. Yeah. I have the camera.
Also needs to force.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. You get it. You get it.
Thank you.
But thank you very much. We also have a proclamation for National Community Educational Outreach Service Week. Is there anybody here for that? Come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for this time. I'm with the Community Educational Outreach Services. We are affiliated with the Mon County Extension. We're an outreach service that helps the vulnerable in the communities, such as our children, veterans, and special projects that might be called upon for us to serve, and we just try to make the community a little bit brighter. So, whereas the Community Educational Outreach Service Proclamation. Whereas the West Virginia Community Educational Outreach Service, our volunteers with a mission to broaden service in our community, continue lifelong education, to strengthen individuals and families, and provide an outreach for leadership. And whereas, in partnership with West Virginia University Extension Service, the C E O S pledges that its purpose of education will assist us in meeting the needs of a changing and diverse society, and whereas, for their significant service and contribution to the well-being of family and community, now therefore, we, the members of the Montague County Commission, do hereby declare May 11th through the 17th, 2025, has the Community Educational Outreach Service Week, adopted this 14th day of May, 2025.
Move that we approve the proclamation as presented?
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And we would love a picture with you. Wonderful gentlemen.
I don't think so.
Yes, you are.
I don't think so.
Come on, Becca.
You actually have a rose between two thumbs.
Yes, right.
All right. One or two.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you.
Do we have any other proclamations?
No, that's it.
Okay, we're out. Out of proclamations, we did our quarter. We'll now have calling. Calling, we will do grants and also requests for reimbursements, all at the same, but at the same time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. First up, I have the Fiscal Year '22 Emergency Management Performance Grant Award. They were awarded $98,361. In addition to that, certifications regarding lobbying needs to be signed.
Okay. I move to approve the grant agreement as presented?
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up, I have requests for reimbursements. The first one is the Community Corrections Grant in the amount of $18,595. Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $1,971.20. Governor's Highway Safety Program, Save Communities, in the amount of $758.43. Impaired Driving in the amount of $4,144.16. Socky Grant, $25,366.21. And the Victims of Crime Act Grant in the amount of $9,166.45.
Move to approve the reimbursements as presented?
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will have the second meeting, we're actually in a public hearing regarding the proposed amendment to the ordinance creating the Mon County Planning Commission, number Since it's a public hearing, should we just open the public hearing? We don't have to have... Do we have to have either side speak?
Well, that's part of your public hearing process.
I guess so. Okay. Andrew, if you want to come on down, so you want to explain and then...
You need to open the public hearing.
Okay. Move to open the public hearing.
Let me explain.
Okay.
There is no time. Let me sum up.
Thank you.
In 1999, the MCPC was created with the purpose of maintaining a comprehensive planning program over the years, or while as it was established, it was originally established for a few planning districts, not the whole county. One was added over time, and by 2004, the first comprehensive plan was passed and adopted to, including those four districts. As a part of that, the Planning Commission members were selected to make sure they represented those planning districts. Over time, then, the update of the comp plan in 2013 kept those districts, and this clause in the ordinance that created the MCPC Amendment 5, or excuse me, Article 5, still preserved those districts and a representative thereof.
Okay.
In 2023, since it was even stated in the 2013 comprehensive plan that the development was going on outside of those districts, and it has certainly only increased, that it seemed no longer pertinent to only represent those districts, and in the 2023 update of the comprehensive plan, it was countywide. So, as a result, this vestige from the early founding, when you had those planning districts, seems a little bit out of date, and so this amendment to correct Article 5, Section 1 of the ordinance that created the Planning Commission, needs to be changed, and that's what this is about.
Thank you for the explanation. Thank you.
I'm here for questions if you need.
Okay. I'll open up public hearing. Did anyone like to speak in favor of this change? Come on down.
I don't think anything else is standing.
Well, you have to.
Yeah.
We have to come up.
Okay. I spoke to early, I guess, earlier. Mary Ann Foles, 321 Morgantown Avenue, just here in support of the amendment change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here in favor? Is there anyone who is not in favor? Okay, before I close it, do you have any questions?
No, just a couple housekeeping items. Just to make sure that this is all documented for the record. This change was published on April 30th and May 9th. The first reading was on the 30th in our regular commission public meeting. The second reading is today in the public hearing. Has staff received any correspondence regarding this possible change? Commissioners?
No.
Anybody?
No.
Okay. And the one, and to point out, as our planner indicated, the one change in this, looking for the exact thing that's changing in this, it's just one sentence in Article 5 that... God, I noted it. Let me pull up the plan. The only thing that's changing is there... There was one sentence.
But it's changed.
And I have the new version. Bear with me for one second here.
Okay.
You're removing this sentence. One Planning Commission member shall be appointed from each district.
Yep. As soon as I opened it, it says yes. So, yes, that sentence is completely removed, where it says one Planning Commission member shall be appointed from each district. So, it allows more participation in the process. So, that's all I have present.
Okay. Seeing there is no other discussion, I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on. Okay, we now have correspondence. Letter from resignation from Kim Moyers, President of the Mon County Development Authority, effective June 30th, 2025.
I reluctantly move that we accept this letter of resignation.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Did you want to speak?
And I do want to thank, Kim's been on the Development Authority since I've been on commission. She is really one of the worker bees behind the scenes that keeps everything going, and probably her biggest accomplishment is she was one of the main people that helped pull together the partnership, when the partnership was envisioned, and then as it went from a thought into reality. And then she served as the partnership's first chair. So, I really appreciate Kim really kind of pulling the organization together in those first couple of years, in all of her efforts to actually stand up the partnership, and we all acknowledge how important that organization now is to our community in terms of being a one-stop shop for economic development and allowing our county to speak in one voice. So, I really appreciate Kim's service in that regard. She also was primarily a finance chair for the Development Authority for most of her years. So, she's always the quiet voice of reason. When she speaks, everybody listens, and they know that she has no hidden agendas, and know that she's just speaking her mind, and that's what I really appreciate about her, and I'm going to miss her service. But she's given her time, and she wants to, she's moving on to devote more time to her personal life and her professional life, so I appreciate her service.
Thank you. The second correspondence, letters of support signed and sent to Senator Capito and Senator Justice in support of the proposed Harmony Grove Interchange Project.
Those were requested by Bill Austin from the MMPO, the commission. The president signed those the other day. I went ahead and forwarded them on to Bill.
Thank you.
Yeah, and in accordance with our process, when these things come up out of cycle, is if there is no opposition to these letters, the president can sign them, and we know them as correspondence in the next meeting, so.
Thank you. Do we have any other correspondence?
I have none.
I do have one little piece of information. This is something we got from the Harrison County Chamber. I think they meant, I don't, I sent it to, I sent it on to Russ Roderson, the president of the partnership, because that's in regards to our chamber, but they wanted to help us spread the word about a annual tank contest they're doing, which is a high-energy pitch competition modeled after the TV show Shark Tank.
Yes.
So, I wanted to, I forwarded it to Russ and asked him if he would forward it through the chamber contacts, and he said he will, and he said it was a good idea. So, anyhow, I just wanted to make sure that that was noted.
Thank you. Seeing another, we will move to unfinished business, which we do not have any. We'll move to new business. A, consideration of approval for County Commission to execute and deliver documentation necessary to release funds from tranche number two for the Commission's outstanding special district excise tax revenue bonds, Series 2023A and Series 2023B, Westridge. And would we like to have Tom Aiman come down and take the Greek and put it in English for us, for the public? And we appreciate all the work you've been doing on this. This has not been an easy, and it's been an ongoing process.
So, I will try to make the language conversion.
Okay. Thank you.
Not always easy, as we know. So, these are the 2023 A and B excise tax bonds. And as you know, those were set up in what was called tranches, which is basically just a term for different streams of funding or different pools of money that could be released, assuming certain conditions were met.
Right.
So, there was money released at closing, and then there were three tranches. And so, tranche number one was redeemed at the end of last year, I think December 1. And so, you'll recall that we went through a process to try to extend those deadlines. Were not able to do that with the bondholders, and so there was a redemption. Similarly, we're approaching another date with May 15th and June 1, which is the deadline to release tranche two and three. Went through a similar process to try to extend those deadlines to November 15th for the filing of the tranche release, and then December 1 for the redemption. However, we had a holder, an investor, a bondholder, that did not want to do that, and so we're left with no, there's not going to be an extension of the two tranches. And so, however, the developer, Westridge, is prepared, we believe, to close on a particular development, which would be necessary to release tranche two by the deadline. So, we think that, or the developer believes that that closing is going to occur today. The deadline is May 15th for the developer to file the tranche release, and so we're anticipating that that is going to occur. And there's a form for that, that he will submit to the trustee, copy the county and bond counsel. There's a analysis prepared by MuniCap that looks at what the tranche two development is, and the revenues that are anticipated from that, and compares that to the debt service to determine whether it meets the test to release the tranche. And the report is indicating that, yes, it does meet the test. However, there, in the first two years, basically, you compare the revenues anticipated from the development to that which was anticipated for tranche two development at the time of issuing the bonds, and if the revenues are equal to or in excess, then the test is met, you release the funds. Although overall, this anticipated tranche two development is in excess, the first two years are short of what was anticipated, and so therefore, it's proposed that there would be a 10th supplemental indenture, which would provide that monies would either be held back from that tranche and placed in a capitalized interest account to make up for the short-term difference in funding and provide monies to pay that debt service. Or if we do, are not able to get a tax opinion from Fred Williams, who's the tax person that needs to give the opinion on whether that's permissible for tax purposes, if that cannot occur, which we think it will, then Westridge would then provide the funds to make up that difference. And so, it would put this in the same financial standing as what would be anticipated for release of tranche two. So, no extensions of the tranches. However, we think tranche two is going to be released, and so the order approves the 10th supplement that we talked about, that, to the indenture, that provides for those monies to be deposited into the capitalized interest account, to square everything up on the financial side, and then a certificate of the county, which is contemplated as one of the things that has to be delivered for tranche two, to release it, and that just directs the trustee to move those monies from the tranche two accounts to the project fund, and in this case, potentially, the capitalized interest fund, and that would satisfy that portion of the requirements to release the tranche. And then we have, just for informational purposes, MuniCap's report, which will be attached to the tranche release request that Westridge will file, and that goes through the business, the revenues that are anticipated, comparing that to the debt service associated with the tranche, showing that in the first, in '26 and '27, there's a shortfall, a calculated projected shortfall of 205,000 to 61,000. So, there will be capitalized additional funding set aside to cover that, and that, however, when you look at... set aside to, to cover that, and that, however, when you look at it from an overall perspective, it's, it's projected to be six hundred and sixty-three thousand in excess of revenues compared to what was anticipated when the bonds were issued in two thousand and twenty-three. So, hopefully that.
Tom, I have one question. Should our, our approval to execute and deliver these doc, these documents be contingent on the, the documentation that the developer has to submit to actually allow this to happen?
And it is, and the, the order provides that it's conditional on.
Okay, so it's in the order?
Yes, it's, it's in the order. It's conditional on, on the developer deliver, delivering the tranche release request, and Munichap delivering their report, and the other items required by other parties in order to release the tranche, that those items are qualified and delivered.
Okay. I would move to execute and deliver the documentation as discussed to release funds from tranche two from the commission's outstanding special district excise tax revenue bond, Series Two Thousand Twenty-Three A and Series Two Thousand Twenty-Three B.
Second, do you have any discussion? I do want, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Rob Steptoe with Cruz Associates, who has also been on this project since day one. So, we really appreciate all your help on that.
And he helps, obviously, the commission do all of our due diligence.
Yes.
As well as with Tom, so.
Which is the key words, due diligence.
Tom, thank you for all your, your, your team and all, all your efforts to keep us on top of this, and same thing for Rob.
Absolutely. I do have some documents for Commissioner Arnett to sign, so perhaps I'll leave those with Renata, and we can get that taken care of.
And I appreciate you explained that clear as mud, so.
I tried.
We're, we're learning, but no, we really appreciate that.
Okay.
Tom, he, we have a eleven o'clock work session with the developer. Are you in that?
I can be.
Okay, because Jeff's supposed to be here by then.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we can take care of that.
Okay, that would be great.
All right.
Okay. It's been properly moved in second, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Just wanted to make sure you didn't forget that verse.
Yeah, no, I wasn't going to forget. Okay. Item B, we are pulling it at this time. We will go to C, consideration of requisition number one oh two for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Requisitions for one million, seventy thousand, three eighty-five, sixteen.
Move that we approve requisition one oh three as presented.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
One oh two.
I'm sorry, one oh two. Yes, one oh two. I got one oh three stuck in my mind. I, I recommend that we approve requisition one oh two for the U T C Economic Opportunity District Subaccount as presented.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of proposed amendment to the ordinance creating the Montague County Planning Commission Number Two Thousand Three Dash Zero One. What's the pleasure?
I move that we approve the amendment to the ordinance creating the Montague County Planning Commission Number Two Thousand Three Oh One as presented.
Second, any discussion?
I, I think we adequately discussed that in the public hearing, that this change is just to remove this sentence from Article Five that says "one planning commission shall be appointed from each planning district," which allows the participation in our planning commission to be more open and inclusive.
Okay. Okay, so you've properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Sorry. Consider sponsorship E for the Cheat Lake Rotary's Two Thousand Twenty-Five Flags for Heroes program.
I move that we approve, did we put a number on that?
Up to.
I think we, in the past, have done up to a thousand.
Up to a thousand dollars.
I move that we approve up to a thousand dollars to be made available for, for our employees to sponsor heroes in, in the Flags for Heroes project.
Second, any discussion?
You want to tell them how, how, tell the employees how they actually can do that?
Yeah, basically, how did you want to do the process? That there is a form that they need to fill out, and then we will do basically the first twenty people that submit it.
I mean, if you like, we can send them out to the offices, or they can contact you directly.
Okay.
However you want to do it.
Do you want to capture them all?
Yeah, why not? They can con, yeah, if they could, you send it out, and they could send it to me.
Okay.
And then that make it easier, and then we will submit them all. And the heroes, and I want it real clear, this is the flags that you see around Montague County, and the heroes does not just have to be military. It could be anyone who you believe is a hero, who's done great things for your family, community, and so on, and it, and it's gone really well, and we hope to see more flags be put out in the community.
Yeah, so, so Tom, you'll capture that information?
I will capture them all.
You'll provide it to the Cheat Lake Rotary, and then you'll have a number that then you can provide an invoice to the county and.
That would be great. Okay. So, properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Do we have any other new business?
No.
Sean?
No.
Okay. Seeing them, we'll have reports from elected officials and department heads? Anything? Nothing? Okay, great. Move, reports from county commissioners? Sean?
Since our last meeting, last Thursday, at the MAP Executive Board Meeting and Development Authority Meeting, on Friday, we had staff reports, and then Administrator and I had a call with a health insurance consultants, and I had a broadband, a local broadband team tag up. Yesterday, we had another call with our health insurance team. Today's a regular day, one work session, and we have our call this afternoon with Federal Highways and Department of Highways regarding the Chaplain Hill Project. Tomorrow, I have a Comcast broadband team tag up, and then we have our M N P O meeting. Other than that, that Friday, we have staff reports. That's all I have.
Okay. Saturday, there is a Mountaineer Food Bank giveaway food program over in the New Mall, over in Westover, we still call it the New Mall. And also, on Thursday evening, I was fortunate, I was asked to be part of a fashion show for Lauren's Wish, and I want to report that I did not trip. I was more nervous about that than speaking in front of a thousand people. I was excited because they said I was walking down a bride, and I thought I was going to be the fa, well, I thought I was going to be the groom, and it said, no, that was kind of like the grandfather with the granddaughter. So, so that, that kind of brought me back to perspective. So, but it was a great time, a great program, and I really want to thank the community for supporting it. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, you be gone.